We're going to call the October 21st, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order. And today we are privileged to have, we have Avery Sneethan and Teagan Crossway, both fifth graders at Skyline Elementary. They're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So we're going to call this meeting to order. And Avery and Teagan, you'll please lead us.
Please join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. And Avery and Teagan, would you tell us, tell us a little bit about yourselves, please.
My name is Avery Sneethan.
My name is Teagan Crossway.
I go to Skyline Elementary. My teacher is Ms. Henderson. I love to sew, and I have a pet tarantula.
(laughing).
I also go to Skyline, and my teacher is Mrs. Shell. And I show cattle, Angus cattle, and I like to sew also, and we're BFFs.
BFFs, that's wonderful. Thank you. That's going to take us down to the consent docket, and we have items A through E on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
I move approval.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the consent docket. And I guess I need to point out that Counselor Scott is not present at the meeting. And the consent docket is approved four to zero. Takes us down to public hearings. We do have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing from Progress Builders for a map amendment for a preliminary plan development at 1400 North Boomer Road. Ms. Dennison.
Good evening. Paula Dennison, Development Services. What you have before you this evening is a request for preliminary PUD. If you take a look at the map, you will recognize that parts of these properties, there are multiple properties involved in this, but parts of them are already developed in apartment housing. When I first came to town, it was known as Yorktown. It's now known as Magnolia Point. And this is located on the west side of Boomer Road. As you can see, the stadium for the high school is on the east side of Boomer Road. So that gives you a proximity of this property. There are multiple properties involved, as you can see, running all the way up from, around the Domino's Pizza delivery and down to the south side of Bennett, and these properties that are adjacent to the creek that's running through there. Couple of things that I would like to advise you of. There's various zonings around. This is a request for a PUD. One of the reasons for the request for the PUD is that it is adjacent to residential neighborhood, and they have, have requested the PUD as sort of a comfort level guarantee to the adjacent single-family properties in the vicinity. Also, they're asking for height differences in excess of what is allowed in the underlying zoning. So the buildings will be taller. This is the actual layout that's proposed. The black areas are the buildings, and you will see four primary buildings. A lot of the parking is going to take up the majority of the space on the property. They have also proposed, this area right here that I'm circling around, that is a parking garage. One of the things that changed between the Planning Commission meeting and this meeting, there has been some adjustment of the site, not building-wise, not density-wise, but where parking primarily is located, to get it out of the flood plain and the floodway so that will not be impacted. They have chosen to build a parking garage. And we think that that was not one of the necessary components to send it back to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did have some concerns, as you saw in your minutes, about the impact to the flood hazard areas. And this proposal is in keeping with mitigating the impacts to those flood hazard areas. So we just, we're okay with it continuing on to the City Council. You can see that there's 156 units, 624 bedrooms. Again, the building height is in excess of the 50 feet that is allowed in the residential zoning district. The density, it still meets the density. Parking, they're providing more than the required vehicular and bicycle parking for the property. Up on the screen, I have a rendering of the typical building elevation and perspective that is going to be proposed. And then this just gives you an idea of where the dark blue, the floodway, and the lighter blue, the flood plain is in proximity to their proposed development, just to give you an idea of that. I'll run through the findings right quick, and then if anyone has any questions of me. Appears to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The intensity is less than that allowed in the RMI zoning district. Floodway and flood hazard areas are located on and adjacent to the property. One of the conditions of the Planning Commission, that the preliminary drainage study be accepted prior to it proceeding to this level. That has been accepted by staff, so that, that change has been made, and therefore reflected in the site plan that you have before you. Prior to them being able to go vertical, they will need to perform a traffic impact analysis. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Counselor Rivera.
Just a random question off the top of your head. Do you have an idea how tall the stadium is across the street?
Uh, no, sir, I do not. I could have pulled those plans and given you almost a two-to-the-inch height, but...
It's taller than 55 feet.
Yes, it is, quite a bit taller. But I don't have any, any knowledge off the top of my head of what that height is. I do know that the parking garage and the new Hester apartment that's being built is, I believe, 72.
Mm-hmm.
As I understand, only the elevator shafts are asking for vari- we're asking for variance by the elevator shaft. Is that true?
Well, this, um, the PUD in and of itself is granting whatever additional height differences there are. So the whole plan, not just a specific variance to that, that one item. So the whole plan is acting as a guarantee, again, of what will be built on that property.
Any other questions, this panel? I only have one. From all the bulk standards, did I read it correctly? The only higher standard or violation of the underlying zoning standard that's being requested is the height. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing, and we have, I believe, three people had asked to speak in favor and one against. And so first I'll call on Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the developer tonight. This project, like Paula said, is coming to you because we are a multifamily zoning in, next to a single-family development. We just want to be upfront with everybody about what we're doing. Currently, there are apartments located on a portion of the tract of land, and then the rest of it is vacant, to the north and then to the south of that, those existing apartments. And correct, the variance is only for the height of the apartment units. And that additional five foot, eight inches is actually because of the elevator shaft. That's the tallest portion of the building. But because of code, we have to ask for, to the tallest peak of the roof. All the other items from code are either more restrictive, or we're meeting them, such as the building setbacks, density, the parking number, and the sizes of the parking spaces. The proposed buildings have been set close to Boomer and Knoblock Streets. See if I can back up here. This one'll do. So Boomer is the street that's going diagonally across the site, and then Knoblock goes south. The buildings have been set at the building setback line along those two streets. This provides the, the most amount of buffer to the neighbors to the west, as well as it works for us because it provides greater visibility to those main streets. The items brought forward from the neighbors and city staff have been traffic and drainage, which is most normally the items that are brought forward. The traffic concern was on Moore, which, ah, went away. There we go. Moore is this north street. This is a neighborhood street. We had proposed, we've always proposed an access here during Planning, Planning Commission. We agreed to go ahead and gate that permanently so that only emergency access vehicles have the key, basically, to that. So no resident access at that location. The other streets weren't as great of a concern. Bennett has always had two drives. Existing apartments are located off of Bennett, so they've always had that apartment traffic. And then our main entrance is here along Franklin on Boomer, and it is an existing signalized intersection. And we have done a preliminary traffic study, and that has come back that that signal will not be overloaded. It still has excess capacity there. Drainage was the next item, and this has been addressed by completely removing some of the parking areas that we had proposed that were close to this floodway, such as like in this area. And then down in here, we removed all of the parking that was in those locations. And we came up with this parking deck. Now, this parking deck is a little bit different than just a typical vertical parking garage. So what we have here is, we've got these, there's my arrow. We've got these drive aisles, typical surface parking, your, you know, parking lot, and then you've got your fourth-story apartment building. Well, right here, you're going to access this parking, the upper level of the parking deck. So it's going to be at the same level as this surface parking here. So that will be at the same elevation. This drive along this north will actually ramp down and access the lower level of the parking deck. So it's first story and basically basement. So nothing is really going vertical. If you can imagine a deck off your back patio or off your back door, your slope is typically going away, so you'd have columns holding up your, your deck. Well, we've just cleaned out underneath there and provided more storage. So with these parking changes, we're able to meet FEMA and city requirements that we're not decreasing any flood plain volume or increasing the flood plain elevation. Lastly, the connection to OSU. We did meet with city and OSU staff prior to going actually to Planning Commission to determine the best access point to OSU. We've, we expect a lot of pedestrian traffic from this, being so close to the university. The Knoblock corridor actually seemed to be the best option for all parties. If you continue on down Knoblock, the Athletic Village is actually going to keep that corridor open. It runs along the east side of the new tract facility. So that's just a natural pedestrian way right there. The other ways we could have crossed, this is the city park over here, we would have to, again, deal with floodway FEMA right there. So with the Knoblock corridor staying open through OSU, this was just determined to be the best option. We have widened the sidewalks along, from the signalized intersection along Boomer and then down Knoblock to 10-foot wide to account for more pedestrians. Right now, there are still apartments remaining between our south property line and Eskridge. I think there's two apartment buildings and maybe a house there. So hopefully in the future, we can upgrade those sidewalks to 10-foot wide as well. That was all I had. Everything else is pretty standard. Do you have any questions?
Questions, Ms. Harris?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay. The developer and then Larry Brown is also here. If you've got any questions for them.
Actually, Mr. Brown is next on the list of people that signed up to speak. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Larry Brown, Sea Star Real Estate, 112 West Hall of Fame. Appreciate the opportunity to finally bring this before you. We've had two or three delays as we've worked through the process and the site plan and made adjustments to better address the needs and concerns that were expressed, more specifically by the neighbors in the neighborhood to the west. And as Kelly mentioned and staff mentioned, there were really three issues that came out of those public hearings. Had to do with drainage, traffic, and then the sidewalk expansion requirement from six to 10 feet. Both the developer and the city are very aware of the issue involving drainage to the west. Obviously, all parties wanted to make sure that any drainage plan that was presented was well thought out and would accomplish what a drainage plan and a drainage process is supposed to accomplish, which is not to adversely affect the adjoining neighborhood. And I think they've done a yeoman's job in providing a very workable drainage plan. It has been accepted preliminarily by the City of Stillwater. The traffic issue, again, the concern was the north entrance and exit onto Moore Drive, specifically students or tenants coming out of that entrance or exit, heading back to the west, up towards Washington, and then cutting back into campus. And if you've been out in that area and driven Moore Drive, you know that it kind of goes down and then comes back up again as it approaches Washington. And there was indeed some concern there. Also, the street currently allows parking on both sides, and there was some concern about additional parking along the street and emergency vehicle access. That's been addressed, again, by making that north entrance an emergency vehicles-only entrance and exit. Again, I think it's a great plan. The property is ripe for development. With the expansion of the campus north, there are two undeveloped tracts and an older existing multifamily that are just ripe for development. I don't know any other way to put it. And to have a quality developer like Progress Builders come into Stillwater, willing to invest the capital to bring quality student housing in such a close proximity, I think speaks well for the community. It will also utilize infrastructure that is currently not being used on the vacant properties. We just think it's a, it's a good plan. Again, my last comment would be, in order to mitigate some of the, the issues that always come about with student-based housing where it is adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, if you'll notice on the site plan, the housing units have been pushed as far east as possible to help mitigate and provide a buffer between the single-family residences on the west and the actual housing units of this apartment complex. The buffer to be utilized by landscaping and by parking, so we think that's also a big plus. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to finally bring this before you. Again, we think it's a great plan. Brett Callahan with Progress Builders is here. If there are any specific questions that you might have concerning the project itself, we appreciate your, your support on this project and look forward to making this happen. I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of the council members might have.
Questions for Mr. Brown?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right, and then Brett Callahan's our third request to speak.
Hi, my name's Brett Callahan. I'm with Progress Builders from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you guys for letting us come to Stillwater and make this presentation. I can't speak any more than Kelly and Larry have done. They've covered everything, and I just wanted to thank yous. And if there's any specific questions I could answer for you guys, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? No? Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, thank you.
And we do have a request from Gene Barrett.
Some of these questions, I couldn't hear well back there, so I apologize for the repetition, if there is repetition. Did I understand from your map that there will be no entrance or exit onto Moore Street? Very good, because the lay of the land is such is that to go west when it's icy or snowy, even though the city sands, that is so steep, I have watched many a person back into the fence, back into the curb. You cannot go up the west side and get on Washington until the ice and snow get to a certain point. So thank you very much for taking care of that. And the other item is the water runoff that you were speaking of. I have not been to the previous meeting, so I'm coming to you very ignorantly here. But that creek barely carries the water flow ever since we foreland Lakeview. Of course, we don't have a dredging plan in the state of Stillwater. The owners are responsible for the creeks. Therefore, that creek probably hasn't been cleaned out since the 50s when it flooded in 57. It probably has not been dredged. Therefore, you're talking about years and years of the creek filling up. But on the plan about the water drainage, where is the water going to go? Are you planning something like Panera Bread had to do, where they have a retaining area and that water is released at a later time so that it does not flow down to this creek? What are we doing?
Ma'am, I would, actually, those are some of the questions I was going to be asking city staff when, after, after the public speaks, then we have a chance to talk with city staff again. And the drainage study was performed, and I was going to be asking a few questions on the drainage study. They're right in line with those questions, so I think we'll be able to get some of those...
We appreciate that.
...those answers. And so, do you have any other questions or comments that you would like to address to City Council?
The only other thing is on the sewer. Where is that hooking into the sewer system? Because they currently, after being involved with this property for 20 years, before 2007, sometime before 2007, I finally got the city to go ahead and just plan on coming out and using their equipment on the sewer mains to make more room for sewage, because that side of town has developed, and our, our sewer line just gets clogged up monthly. And so I didn't know if this will hook up to something on the east side, or something that runs along Boomer Lake, or whether it's going to come down to our area, and your trucks are going to need to come more often than once a month to clean out the sewer mains.
I will add that question. Ask city staff here in just a minute.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Those are all our requests to speak at the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing and ask Ms. Dennison to come back up with Planning Commission's recommendation.
Yes, thank you. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request. They did have some changes. Those changes, as reflected in your report, have been made. So they are recommending approval at a unanimous vote. But I'll get it back here so we can address any questions that you may have.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start with Mrs. Barrett's questions. Did, did you hear her questions?
Yes, I did.
Could you address those for us, please?
From the standpoint of Moore Street, as Kelly indicated, Moore is going to be restricted to emergency access only. There is not going to be the ingress egress of any of the residents or visitors or anybody coming to this apartment complex. So it will be emergency access only from that...
Because it will be gated?
It will be gated, and there will be a Knox box that fire department has provided the key to. Yes, sir. On the drainage concern, the storage of the storm water, and Kelly can assist as the designer if needed, the storage of the storm water is going to be detained in underground pipes and then released into, directly into the creek. And the design that Kelly has provided and the numbers, the timing of the release that she has provided are acceptable under the city's code and the standards that we have in place. The sewer connection, anytime a development comes in, there is the requirement for sewer analysis as well as a water analysis to be performed. And this is not at the stage for that full analysis to be completed at the time, but the developer and Kelly have already been in discussions with Development Services and the Water Utility Staff about where will be the best connection point for whatever sewer basin to be serviced through this development. So that's still in preliminary talk and investigation standpoint at this time.
Okay.
Okay? Hope that answers her questions.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on Planning Commission's recommendation?
Just, again, another random question. The properties that'll be torn down had so many units. Do you remember how many units are in that plan?
I will defer.
The existing apartments have 68 units, 110 beds.
How many beds?
110.
Okay.
A goodly increase.
Okay. And I believe I, I did see in their reports that all the landscaping numbers are met, all other, all other requirements under RMI are satisfied, and the only difference is the height.
That is correct.
And I don't know if this question is for you or for Mr. Dorman. The three changes, is, what my question's going to be is, what is the proper motion to make sure that those three requirements from Planning Commission are part of any action by City Council?
Your motion to approve the requested zoning change with the, or excuse me, the, it's actually planned unit development with the additional requirements imposed by the Planning Commission.
Sure.
And I would so move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And I guess I should point out that Counselor Scott is now here. Okay. There is a motion and a second to approve Planning Commission's recommendations with those required changes. Any discussion?
Not at this time, ma'am.
And that is approved five to zero. Yes. Okay. That'll take us down to ordinances and on first reading, ordinance 3241. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance rezoning a tract of land located at 424 East Thomas Avenue from IL Light Industrials District to CG Commercial General District.
Okay. Any questions on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second on ordinance 3241. That is approved five to zero. And also on first reading, we have ordinance 3242.
An ordinance closing a 40-foot portion of the right-of-way of Boomer Road at property addressed as 1400 North Boomer Road.
Any questions on this ordinance?
Not at this time, ma'am.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. That is also approved five to zero and will take us down. Mr. Dorman, do you have anything for us?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Counselors, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And actually, I do have one thing. I do see, I see troop 802. Everyone turn this way for me. Is that the only troop we have here? Okay. Troop 802, thanks for being here tonight, working on merit badge. Which one?
Sixty-one.
I like it. I like it. Okay. Well, thanks for being here.
Do I hear a measure for one of them to come up and talk about it?
(laughing).
None.
Nah. I don't want to do that to them. Okay. Anything for upcoming meetings?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay. That's going to take us down to appointments. Pull up my notes. For Rural Water Advisory Board, I would nominate Raleigh Jobs and Robert Sitten for reappointment.
I would second.
And that is approved five to zero. And on business improvement, District One, I would nominate for reappointment Suzie Presley, Kyle Gibbs, Katrina Jarvis, and Jim McCollum for reappointment.
Second.
Motion a second on that. That is also approved five to zero. And I would also nominate Joyce Meyer to fill the vacant seat number eight on the Business Improvement District Board. That is also approved five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn city council. That is approved five to zero, so city council is adjourned, and I will call to order the Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting for October 21st, 2013. On the consent docket is item A through C. Does anyone wish to remove items A through C?
I would move approval of the consent docket.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent docket. That is approved five to zero. Nothing else on the Stillwater Utility Authorities' agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority?
I move to your chair.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority. That is also approved five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.